Right, and we will move into the Urbana City Council meeting when the clerk gives us the nod.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for April 13th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members Brown?
Here.
Colbrook?
Here.
Mercy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Moore-Marlin?
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from the March 23rd meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Now seconds. Dennis, Dennis seconds.
Seconded by Dennis. Any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. We're at the public input portion of the meeting. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? Please raise your hand. Do you see anyone, Charlie?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Have we received any emails?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Okay, I do have a proclamation to read. Proclamations go on whether we're real or virtual, so this is a special one. This is Community Development Month. Or Community Development Week, sorry, but we'll just make it a month. Whereas, "Community development provides the foundation for the city of Urbana that we build off to improve the lives of its citizens." And whereas, "Community development creates strong diverse communities that are able to attract and keep talent, start and grow businesses, and overcome issues that arise." And whereas, "Since 1975, the Community Development Block Grant Program has provided annual funding and flexibility in our local community to provide affordable housing, suitable living environments, and expanded economic opportunities principally to meet the needs of our low and moderate income residents." Whereas, "Since 1995, the Home Investment Partnership Program," which is the home program, "has provided our community with a critical resource to fill the gap needed to finance the development of affordable housing." Whereas, "Over the past five years, the city of Urbana has received and distributed more than $2.2 million, $250,000 in CDBG funds, and $3 million, $750,000 in home funds, and provided its residents with important and flexible assistance through the funding of neighborhood revitalization, housing rehabilitation, public improvements, and social services." And whereas, "The community recognizes the contributions of dedicated community development professionals and extends sincere appreciation for their commitment to excellence in their efforts to improve and enhance the health, welfare, and prosperity of those living in the city of Urbana." Now therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 13th through 17th, 2020 as Community Development Week in the city of Urbana, Illinois. And I want to give a special thank you to our community development employees. They're outstanding. They've done a tremendous job this past month in keeping programs and services and inspections and permits and assistance going in these very difficult times. And so we tremendously appreciate their efforts for our community. Unfinished business, we have none. Reports of standing committees, I don't believe there are any. Reports of special committees, we have none. Reports of officers. Any reports? Okay. Going up on new business, Resolution Number 2020-04-018R, which is a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Allocation of Motor Fuel Tax Funds. And then related to this is Ordinance 2020-04-017, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the capital improvement plan. Carol? Or Justin? Not sure who's... Justin? Okay. Justin Swinford?
All right. Yeah, so as the mayor mentioned, we have a resolution and an ordinance. I just realized they may be kind of in backwards order on the agenda here. So we'll start with the budget amendment. This, as the memo states, we've got two projects in mind with how we would like to adjust the budget for the rest of the current fiscal year. The first project is EMCOR Project 5. This is one we've known about for a long time. This project was originally budgeted for, out of the, actually out of four different funds. The general fund, state MFT fund, sanitary sewer benefit tax, and stormwater utility fee. So there's a lot going on here. But what we'd like to do with this project is is make it so that we're spending more of our state MFT funds on this project and taking those local fund, or the general fund dollars that were previously assigned to that project and making that available for the other project, which is the Vine and Washington Resurfacing Project. So that project is scheduled for construction in this summer. We originally were, or we are still shooting for getting this done between the end of the school year and beginning of the next school year. We might be afforded a little bit more time, but that's yet to be determined. So we're still targeting that window for construction and late May bid opening. So using only general fund or local funds for the Vine and Washington project is going to allow us to move a little bit faster and not going through the I. dot review process. And we have a consultant that's been doing the, or working on the design for us. So we're getting closer and closer with those project plans. And we were planning on doing a public meeting to bring the, or to reach out to the neighborhood and people that would be directly impacted by construction. And we're going to work on ways to do outreach a little bit differently, given the current conditions. So those are the two projects. I guess to jump back to EMCOR, then we've identified other projects that we don't have scheduled for construction in 2020. Projects that were included in the capital improvement plan, but it's hard to say whether it was ever realistic to do all that, that entire list of projects. One of the four projects that we're borrowing that money for in the state MFT funds is Vine and Washington. So really, that's just a switch from state MFT to local funds. Another one is the Florida Avenue, the first phase of the Florida Avenue project that we have federal dollars for in fiscal year 23. And that first phase of that project is something that we're working with the Regional Planning Commission. They've applied for a state grant that would cover the cost of that first, that corridor study for Florida Avenue. And then the other two projects are projects that are actually also near the Urbana schools. And it would, it'd be difficult to do that many projects in the same neighborhoods in one year anyway. And we'll be ready to go with those projects, but we're also taking a look at where our other priorities lie. We have a long list of projects to do and we have somewhat of a backlog, but we want to make sure we're doing the projects that are going to put us in the best position moving forward and the ones that really need to take a priority. So for this summer, the Vine and Washington project and then obviously EMCOR project are those two projects. That doesn't mean we might not start something else later in the year, but as far as fiscal year 20 goes and getting projects started before the end of this fiscal year, those are the two we have in mind. So I know there might be some questions about the numbers and I'm happy to answer any of those as best I can.
Mary Alice, you have a question?
Yes, so I was wondering what the original estimate for the final phase of EMCOR was.
So we haven't released our engineer's estimate yet or the bid. We opened bids and we've read that number aloud. That's the lump sum we've been, because we don't know. I guess depending on what we decide tonight, you know, if we have to rebid that out, that project, then we have to be careful about releasing too much information. So the original budgeted amount for EMCOR was about 2. Well, there, let me there are a few different numbers to consider. So we have construction and costs, and then construction engineering or construction observation costs. So the original construction cost was 2.7 million. And to clarify that, 2.7 million was the cost of the roadway improvements and things like lighting and landscaping and other costs that we would get reimbursed for. So that didn't include things like stormwater or storm sewer improvements and sanitary sewer improvements. So I guess to answer your question, the construction cost for the roadway improvements originally was 2.7 million dollars.
Okay, so now the total cost is about approximately 4 million, so it's 1.3 million over budget? Over expected budget?
Well, that 4 million includes the, I think it's $670,000 roughly, of storm and sanitary sewer improvements. So it'd be closer to 3.4, 3.5 million for the construction costs.
And so did we originally intend to bid out the oversight cost? Which is, what is it? It's estimated about 700,000 right now, right?
That's the total engineering cost that we have yet to pay. The construction observation agreement is for $472,000. And that includes time from our design consultant and then materials testing, which is about 15% of that roughly. And then, and then just the time for the staff in the field to do both inspection and documentation.
So what, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, were we in, originally, were we intending to bid that out? Or were we intending to do that in-house?
What?
Not the construction, but the oversight?
Okay. We did not do that for Project 1. The City of Champaign was largely involved in that role for Project 1. And we had city staff in the field doing some of that work. But when it came to documentation and the first few projects worked a little bit differently because of the federal dollars involved and the partnership with the UVA and the City of Champaign. So it was more of a group effort on that project. And this project, we're really treating more of just a local road, like a local road project. So we are kind of on our own for that. And it's something that, that I think we'd have to figure out the best. I mean, we've considered it, you know, what our options are. And that was what we determined was the best thing for us moving forward is to have someone available in the.
So I guess, let me rephrase my question. I think that we always knew that the piece from BSC2 Race was going to be primarily done by Urbana. It was not part of the joint, right? With the university and with the City of Champaign. So what I'm really trying to get at here is, did we originally think that the cost is going to be for the sanitary sewer change and for the construction of the road? 3.2, I believe, is what you quoted me. It was 2.7 for just the construction. I'm trying to figure out, like, where we went awry here, because that's a lot of money.
Well, it's not necessarily going awry. Carol can fill you in on some of the background.
If I could, I just want to circle back about the construction observation first and then I'll get to this. I think that the cleanest answer on that is, we did not originally have in our estimates contracting out construction observation. Having said that, I don't think it was ever realistic for us to be able to manage that entirely in-house. So I think there was some slippage there that we probably should have thought that through more thoroughly, rather than just assuming that could have all been accomplished in-house. On the cost front, you know, these original budget estimates, however you would like to phrase it, those were prepared, as in my understanding, back in 2016. And there was an understanding, Craig spoke about this multiple times, that those estimates were low. And so I don't know how that happened. I don't know why that happened. But the decision was made at the time to move forward based on those estimates. And the decision was also made at that time that the cities would absorb any cost overruns relative to those estimates. So, you know, it's easy to sort of second guess everything now, but based on what I have been told from Craig, who was there from the very beginning, that was understood by many people that those estimates were low.
So when we did the budget planning for the year, because we knew that this was coming up, right? So we knew that we were going to attempt to do the final phase of the EMCOR. Did we count on those original 2016 ideas in terms of what this would cost in our original budget? Because right now, we're being asked to do a budget amendment. Now, maybe part of that has to do with which funds are paying for which item. But at the end of the day, you know, we had to budget for that. So that's what I'm trying to figure out. Did we make those decisions with the annual budget based on the estimate from 2016?
Right. I don't, I don't really know, because there's only, like, literally a handful of people who are actually preparing estimates for the CIP. But what I, when I can say is that the discipline that we intend to employ going forward in the CIP, which is as things roll forward, we are going to have, for each project that's in the CIP, we are going to have a page that describes that. And it's also on that page, we will have the date that the estimate was prepared and based on what level of refinement of drawings and plans and so forth. So that it's natural that budgets change over time as you get more information and the plans come together and are developed. And often, because construction costs never seem to go down, those estimates go up. And I don't think there's been that discipline. I think it's been kind of what we're dealing with here, which is old numbers and we'll sort it out when we get a bid and figure it out at that point. I don't think there's been, I keep using the word discipline, but as things roll forward through the CIP, I think it's in the spirit of transparency and in the spirit of equipping the council with the kind of information they need to make real good decisions in advancing the CIP. I think you need the best information that you can get at, you know, each decision point in time.
Okay, so I think we had talked about, I'm trying to figure out, are we taking the difference between the funds in terms of what we budgeted this year? And now the costs that we know, the real costs that we know in order to do the project, that's coming directly from the state motor fuel tax, right? That's where all the money is coming from. So that means, is that correct?
Not all the money, no. So we are shifting money out of the local fund from the EMCOR project, but not all of the money from the EMCOR project. So there's actually more money budgeted in the local fund for EMCOR than in the state MFT.
Okay, so we're trading. Is that fair to say? We're trading local and state?
Roughly.
Roughly speaking, so we originally planned to do the Vine and Washington with the state funds, partially? Okay, so from what I understand is that if you use state funds, and this is just based on what you presented today, but if you use state funds, then you have to go through additional levels of approvals and, is that right? Carol shaking her head, yes. So it makes more sense at least to concentrate those state funds into one project, so you only have to do that for one project and those rules don't apply to the next. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood why we're switching money here. And so does that mean, do we have any estimate in terms of how much money we would have left over in the local fuel tax now that we're swapping the state and the local for the Vine?
It's not the local fuel tax. This is just the general fund. So the money we're transferring out of EMCOR will largely cover the cost of Vine and Washington in addition to some other funds that we have available through our maintenance project fund. We, with the Dr. Ellis project, the bid came in under budget. So we have, that's where most of the money comes in to make up that difference. So that's where the, all the money really is coming from for the Vine and Washington project is what we're taking from EMCOR and then what we saved on the Dr. Ellis project. And so then that won't impact any other projects.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Miller and then Sharice have their hands up.
Great, thank you. Jared?
Justin, I was gonna ask one thing that Mary Alice already asked and got for me. Why we were doing the switch up, because it was sort of clear, but not completely clear, but I get it now. What about the balances remaining for the other smaller projects that we're pulling funds from? Do those have monies in them other than what we're pulling out of them? Are we completely exhausting what is in those funds now for those other smaller projects?
We are completely exhausting what's in those funds for those four projects in the state MFT fund. But that doesn't mean that money won't be available. So what we're doing with all of this is, we have to have the money available in our accounts to be able to award the bid at the full price and every, I mean, it's the big sticker price. And then that, we expect that price to come down due to some considerations with things like construction phasing that have changed in the last few weeks. So it's the sticker price, if you will, but we're not intending to pay that. But we have to have that money available. And that includes payments that we will then get reimbursed for. So there are roughly $700,000 worth of reimbursements coming our way from MTD and the University of Illinois as part of the EMCOR agreement. And that money will then, in future fiscal, or be available in the future fiscal year to kind of backfill those funds that we've taken, or that we've, that we've rated, or not rated.
Reallocated.
Reallocated, that's the word.
Okay, thanks.
Sharice?
Um, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess this question is kind of for Justin. What are the sanitary and sewer issues that you're taking care of with the Race Street? Project. Also, I thought that the Dr. Ellis money was allocated by a different fund. And if you have monies left over, I'm sure there are other issues in the Ellis subdivision that can be taken care of regarding our sewer and sanitation stuff. I was wondering if you could answer and talk to, speak to that.
Okay. Yeah, so for the first part, for EMCOR, what we're spending money on for storm sewers is just some storm sewer improvements that need to be made because of the age of the sewer. There's never a better time to fix our underground utilities and we're already tearing up the road anyway. And so we're gonna, there are some areas where we need a little bit more capacity or just to change the configuration of the storm sewers to better drain the road. And so that's that component for EMCOR. The sanitary sewers, we're building a sanitary sewer for two and a half blocks worth of Green Street, where there only currently exists shared private sanitary sewers. And that's a problem that we have all over town. And again, it's just, it's the right time to install the public sanitary sewer that people can then connect to as their existing shared sewers become a problem in the future. It's.
So we're building, just to be clear, we're building a main, correct?
Yes, yes. We're building a new sanitary sewer main right down the middle of the street. And that will be available for all the properties adjacent to that main. We're not connecting anybody to that. We're just building it so it's there for when people need it in the future.
Okay, so my second question is regarding leftover monies from the Ellis subdivision. And like I said, there are sewer issues, which Dr. Evelyn Burnett Underwood will attest to for the past, I don't know how many years that she's been coming to council meetings, that you, are you saying that there's nothing, there's not enough money that you can delve into that problems with the leftover, because, you know, monies that were designated for Ellis subdivision?
So I wanted to answer that, and then if there's follow-up that Justin needs to do, he can do that. So there was a scope of work that was outlined for what would be done in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. And we have satisfied the scope of work that was represented to you and the public as what we would accomplish in terms of ADA ramps, sidewalk repairs, curb repairs, street repairs, and so forth. And there are no public sewer issues that are priorities to be dealt with in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. The issue of longstanding involves private infrastructure that the city is not going to be, is not going to be dealing with.
Okay, so the, with that in mind, you don't, you can't use, you're saying that you can't use the leftover funds from Ellis subdivision work to actually work on other infrastructure in Ellis subdivision?
Well, we determined that there was a scope of work of what needed to be done and that is what will be addressed. It wasn't that there was an allocation of money to Dr. Ellis that would be spent until it was exhausted. It was represented that there was a scope of work that would be satisfied. If we had come up short on the money, we would have had to find funds elsewhere in order to satisfy the scope of work. It was a happy circumstance that there was competitive bidding and we got good prices and we came in under the, under what we had budgeted. The commitment was to a scope of work, not to an expenditure of funds.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand. What was, I had, I thought I had another question.
Well, I'm going to move on to another council member and then come back when you remember.
Okay, thank you. I'll put my hand up.
I think Bill and then Eric. Oh, lots of hands. Okay, we'll just work our way through.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks for answering my questions earlier today. Hopefully it gave you a little bit of practice for some of the questions you got tonight. I did think of one other when you mentioned the sewer main. Several years ago, we talked about a dig once policy and putting in fiber. And we brought that up as an example, as potentially when we did the EMCOR 5 project, we could see if there was an opportunity to lay conduit for fiber that people might be able to use later. Did you look into that at all, get a chance to see if there was a need for that?
I don't know if it was discussed or looked into. That may have been before my involvement. I haven't seen any notes on that. It's certainly not a bad idea. That's, we found fiber installations are pretty uninvasive because they bore most of that and then they're responsible for any damage, or replacements of the pavement. But that is always tough to see happen to a brand-new street. So it hasn't been considered, but we have been in contact throughout the constructor or product design phase with various utilities. And hopefully that would, it's given any of them an opportunity to come forward and say, while you've got it torn up, we'd like to do some work. Or, you know, I think a lot of that is demand-based. And we see that a lot where some, a fiber company will submit an application for a license agreement to serve even, sometimes just a few properties. And so I don't know how far in advance they plan some of those installations.
Okay, and if a fiber company is listening tonight, is it too late to contact you to let you know that they're interested in that?
Of course not. No, we'd. Of course not, no, we'd, you know, we're always, we're, I mean, we, we have to consider all those applications and so if we got one tomorrow or in a month, you know, even, we certainly find a way to make that work in everyone's best interest.
Okay, yeah, I remember when, especially along Florida Avenue, they hit a lot of sewer lines, actually, people, you know, people's connectors and ended up causing a lot, they paid for it eventually, but caused a lot of damage to the right-of-way and, and just inconvenience and everything. I don't know if you mentioned it, did you mention how much, I think there was a, a piece of funding in the Illinois capital bill for the Vine and Washington project? I think one of the few pieces that Urbana got in that capital bill.
Yeah, and I, I realized after we submitted the memo that that was, that had been left out, but we do have, I think it's $400,000 that was identified in the capital bill. And so that will come as reimbursement, as I understand it, for that work. But that, that helps too, to make up the difference from the original project scope to the revised scope.
Okay, and then just one final one on the Race Street project from, I forget what was, California to Washington or something?
That sounds right.
I know you've done some patching there, it's a little bit better, but that project's been in the capital improvement plan for several years and it just seems to always get rolled over. And the main thing that concerns me with that is the sidewalks, the conditions of the sidewalks here are really bad and there's still some curbs that don't have curb cuts and ramps. And with its proximity to downtown and the, some of the senior housing and subsidized housing there, it seems like that, that should be a priority, so I hope that if we put it back in there next year, we can make it happen. Did you have a picture of the sidewalk? I don't know if you can see it there.
Oh, I can kind of see it, I see some water standing on the sidewalk. That's never good.
There's like missing bricks and, you know, and no ramps and stuff like that, so...
Okay, yeah, that one, that, that is one that we have invested some time in to this point. So, you know, as, as we continue to identify projects and then the next wave of projects, the ones that we've already invested time and done some of that design work for, can easily make their way to the top if, if that makes sense in the, you know, in the context of everything else we have going on around town.
Can, can I just add on a comment to that, which is, we really are taking a hard look at all of the, all of the potential locations that should be, I mean, we, we have so many, you know, priorities that we really have to triage what we attend to. And we also want to make sure that rather than just kind of rolling numbers forward, this goes back to what Mary Alice was asking about budgeting and so forth, like Vine and Washington, that just kind of rolled forward without a real good eye towards what should this project really be? Should it be resurfacing or should it be reconstruction? And when, you know, we took a look at it, it, one of the reasons why we had to, you know, do some reallocation for that project is because it was determined that the scope was wrong. So, you know, thinking about what you just described in terms of the condition of Race Street and the other, you know, the related sidewalk infrastructure, we really need to examine what should the full scope of that be? And I suspect that the, the numbers on that are gonna go way up because what, what has been, you know, allocated up to this point is probably not gonna get it. So, you know, you, this year is gonna be a, another sort of transition year with the CIP for a number of reasons, not the least of which is, you know, our financial condition, but also giving us time to really, you know, get a sense of where some of these projects are and, and in terms of scope and getting proper cost estimates to go with that.
Thank you.
Right, we'll move to Dennis and then down to Eric and Mary Alice.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So, I guess maybe partly my, my question has been somewhat answered because what I was gonna ask, and I guess thank you, Justin, for answering some of the questions I had sent to you earlier today. But when we have a large project such as the EMCOR V project and we receive only one bid, is there a condition that we have to meet that we have to like rebid or reevaluate the project and reduce it somehow to try to accommodate the difference between the expected amount for the cost of the project and the larger cost for the resulting bid? Are we, is, is, does a city feel comfortable in the fact that we have one bid and we're just gonna be going with that?
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Karen.
Let me go first and then Justin could add on.
Okay, great.
So, not every situation where we get only one bid, would we say, you know, oh, let's just go with the one bid. But we had a, you know, we have an engineer's estimate and as, as Justin said, we're not at this point really comfortable talking about that publicly because we don't know the status of whether we will come to, what will happen with your vote tonight. But we are sufficiently comfortable that we're, that we're here now and that there's enough, there's enough of a, of a relationship between the engineer's estimate and this bid that on balance, we would prefer not to go back out to bid. But if you don't, if you don't find, given, we can't tell you everything that we know publicly, if you don't find that compelling, then we will have to go back out for bid and that's something we're not recommending at this point. So, there's a little bit of tea leaf reading that you have to do, but we're comfortable with this single bid. And this is the contractor who's done every other phase of EMCOR, right? Justin?
Four, or three of the four so far.
Three of the four, okay.
Yeah.
And, and I do, I do recognize that you were just commenting recently that some of the estimates that had been in the CIP in the past, which may not be this project because of its scope, but that, that some of the, some of the costs have been rising anyways and that if we're looking at bid estimate factors that are like a couple of years old, they may not be that accurate.
So I, I do want to make a distinction and this is my layperson's distinction, so Justin can refine it, but there's a difference between a, a budget estimate that you would see in the CIP and an engineer's estimate that you do in-house prior to going out for bid that is really based on recent information. And there can be differences between what bid you get and, and the engineer's estimate based on differences in scope that might have, there might be some, some differences that become apparent. But the engineer's estimate is a more current estimate than the budget.
I catch ya. And then lastly, there were some, some aspects of the Boneyard Beautification Project that occurred several years ago, like in 2007 or so, where the, because of the cost of the bids, the, the, because of the, the expected larger cost to complete the project, certain elements of the project were reevaluated and reduced. The project was reduced to some degree and we were actually asked to, to choose aspects of the project which we thought we could live without to secure the, the completion of the beautification project for Phase Three, which now exists and has been dedicated. And I'm wondering if, that, if you're, if you're comfortable enough with the, with the proposed expense to not have to deal with a reevaluation of the project and, and maybe some details that might be reduced?
We're comfortable with the scope as it is.
Okay. That's it then for me.
Eric?
Yeah, so I'd just like to be sure that I understand what you're saying, so I'm gonna kind of read it back to you in my own words. We had a budget estimate for this project. There also was, we also had in-house, but the council, I don't think was, was shared, it was shared with council, an engineering estimate that was higher than the budget estimate and was somewhat closer to the bid that in fact came in. So, so that's why we're winding up spending more than we thought we would based on the budget estimate, assuming we approve this, but it's not so much more than it would have been based on the engineering estimate. Am I, am I, have I got that straight?
More or less. I, I think, one way I would respond to perhaps clarify what you just said is absent the bid, so if we hadn't gone out for bid and we came back to you and we were gonna report on the status of the financials for this project, we would have been able to tell you it's gonna cost more than we have budgeted.
Okay.
Based on the engineer's estimate. We didn't know exactly how much more until we actually got a bid because, you know, until you have a bid, you're not going to, you, you don't have someone who's willing to do the work. But we could have told you that it was gonna be more than the budget.
Okay, um, and I guess the obvious next question is, why did you not tell us?
We don't have that, that's not a step in our process, but what I was trying to communicate earlier when I was describing how the CI, how we hope the CIP will, will evolve in the coming years is that as the CIP, as a project goes through its cycle in the CIP and maybe, and maybe is developed over a number of years in the CIP, and initially it might just be a concept, you know, kind of like a ballpark number, order of magnitude number that is put in the CIP as a placeholder in, and it's maybe in year four. And then the next year goes by and, and now we have, I don't know what the next step in developing the design, but, you know, we have a preliminary design. And so we know more about, we know some engineering stuff and, and we know more about what's involved and, and then we'll make, and then we'll refine that budget estimate based on this additional information. And in the CIP, we'll tell you, we've, we're changing this now based on this new information. And then each year that goes by, you'll see that number become more and more refined as the design goes through its, you know, maturation process. We don't have that now, we're trying to hold ourselves to a higher standard in the CIP, but that has not been the past practice.
Aha, okay, so I guess, so again, I'll just read back to you what I think I'm hearing you say in my own words, that in the future, if we have budgeted for something in the future and your best estimate of what it's gonna cost changes, you'll let us know as that occurs, that'll become part of the process.
It'll become part of approving the CIP. Those budget numbers, as they change over time, you will be approving different budget numbers as, as we go through the evolution of the design of a given project.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mary Alice?
So I just want to piggyback off of Sharice's comments because she triggered something in her questions. The first one was, I thought I remembered that the Dr. Ellis subdivision sidewalk was going to be paid for out of CDBG funds. Was that the initial thought? I, I just remember us talking about that.
Part of the scope, or part of the, part of the funding plan for that is to use some CDBG, it's not 100%, though. Isn't that right, Justin?
Yeah, it's $105,000 of CDBG funding and then the remainder is paid out of the local fund.
And so what is the remainder that's paid out of the local fund?
The project, I think the total project cost was about $360,000.
So about a third of it was CDBG fund, roughly?
Yes.
Okay, because I was trying to figure out how we could move CDBG funds over to Vine and Washington because that doesn't qualify for those.
No.
Right? Okay, and then you made the distinction between the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer. So the sanitary sewer, just for, hopefully, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's the sewer line that's hooked up to houses to take away all the sewage. The storm sewer is where you get the water drainage on the streets when, right, those, that's the distinction between the two.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so it sounded to me like on the EMCOR project, we're replacing both? Is that correct?
We're, no, we're not replacing sanitary sewer, we're actually adding sanitary sewer where there isn't currently a, a city-owned sanitary sewer main in the right-of-way adjacent to about two and a half blocks worth of properties.
So how are those properties currently hooking up to the sanitary sewer?
We don't entirely know, we know that somehow water, or sewage gets from those buildings to a city sewer main, but it's, it's mostly through shared private sewers, sometimes they're called party line sewers, so they either...
Does not sound like a party.
No, it certainly isn't. When something goes wrong and it, and it affects, affects multiple property owners and it becomes a real headache, so, you know, the, we're just, we're, again, taking advantage of the timing of the project and the fact that there's not a sewer there to provide this for, for residents, so, or property owners. So in the future, as they have those sewer problems and they determine that they can't get together and fix it themselves, we'll be able to say, well, there's a sewer out front in the right-of-way adjacent to your property, that's where you should make the connection. So...
So, so it sounds to me like there are actually some sewer, I'm gonna call them main lines, if we have party lines and we have city-owned lines, right? People don't even know, probably, I have no idea if my house is connected to a city sewer or a party line. So, I, I mean, it just sounds, it's, I guess it's news to me and, and the reason that I'm kind of driving this home is because the Dr. Ellis subdivision, I believe, is concerned about the location of the city sewer line. So rather than being down the middle of the road, it's on one side of the sidewalk and so those lateral hookups have to go underneath the road completely. So if we were to replace that line, everybody's lateral line would have to be reconnected.
Correct, that's true.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to make sure I understood that and I, I just wanted to articulate a little bit more about what Sharice was talking about. But in this case, we're not asking anybody to connect their lateral line to the new line that's gonna be put in. This is just, it's just gonna be there.
Right, right, it's just there for when it's needed in the future.
Okay. This old, oldest part of Urbana has many creative sewer configurations, some of which we don't even know about, but it's, it's, it's a challenge. Sharice, you had a question?
Oh, yes, so the other thing I wanted to know is, will any of this, what's going on now affect any funds in the, regarding how, how these repairs get done, meaning lack of funds therefore, you know, so forth? Will, will, will the lockdown have any effect on, on any of this that's going on that we're talking about right now?
When you said...
Funding-wise.
Repairs, what repairs are you referring to?
Oh, I'm talking, I'm, I mean, the street repairs and, and, and any other repairs that are happening around the city. Are, are we running, by, by moving these funds around, are we running into an issue where we may possibly not have enough funds, I guess, because of this period of time right now? Or all, all this is already budgeted and done and we don't have to worry about, you know?
Well, I, I don't want, you know, nothing is, exists in a vacuum, but we've been sitting on millions of dollars worth of capital, unexecuted capital projects for a number of years. And so this is money that's been sitting around now, and with the expectation, I mean, we absolutely have to do EMCOR Phase Five, it's a partnership and we're, we're batting cleanup on this one, so, you know, we have to finish the project and, and then, you know, and we have to do it in a timely manner because there's federal money involved and there's a deadline on that. But, you know, moving forward, we, we don't know what the financial situation's gonna look like, but the capital program is driven in part by general fund dollars. And to the extent that general fund dollars become more scarce, that will impact our capital program.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I was wondering, thanks.
And we can be sure that general fund dollars are not going to increase dramatically, so...
I think we can be sure general fund dollars are going to decrease.
That's, that too, yes. Any other questions on these two items? Do we need to reverse the order in which we take these votes? Justin mentioned something about that.
I don't, I don't...
No?
Yeah, the, the MFT funds are already available, so it shouldn't matter.
Okay, so we can take resolution, the first resolution?
I think it was just the way that Justin wanted to talk about it.
Gotcha, okay.
That's it.
I do, before you vote on the...
One has to go before the other, all right. So is there a motion for Resolution 2020-04-018R?
I'd like to make a motion, that Resolution Number 2020-04-018R... I'd like to make a motion that Resolution Number 2020-04-018R, Resolution for Improvement Under the Illinois Highway Code for Allocation of Motor Fuel Tax Funds, I move for it to, for passing.
Okay. There...
I'll second.
Seconded by Jared. Further discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. There are motion for Ordinance 2020-04-017.
Yeah, I'll do that one. Ordinance, I'd like to, I would like to represent to approve ordinance or 2020-04-017, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. This is a budget amendment number seven concerning the capital improvement plan for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Further discussion.
I just want to clarify something. There's a, Sharice had called me earlier, and with her eagle eye, she saw that there was a typo in the ordinance. So I, before you voted on it, I just wanted to correct. It's the last whereas in the ordinance on page one, it says, it says, whereas the budget director may not, may not make such revision. It's "may not."
All right. So with that correction, I submitted for approval.
Okay. Does the second or accept that correction?
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right. Well, the clerk, please call the roll, and this, I vote on this one.
Yep. Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. That motion passes. Thank you for your eagle eyes, Sharice. Next up, we have ordinance number 2020-04-018 and 019. Scott Tess is back with us.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Great. Well, this must seem like deja vu all over again. We are back to the City Council with the same two leases to approve for landfill solar development that you all had voted on in a resolution a few weeks ago. It is back because after the vote, staff determined that leasing city property according to city code requires a 15-day public notice, a public hearing, and a three-quarters vote of all the alderpersons and the mayor. So we are back with the exact same lease. There were some formatting changes to the signature page, but everything else is the exact same as we looked at a few weeks ago. This does give me the opportunity to answer a couple of questions that came up in council a few weeks ago. One was as to whether there was a plant commission approval, and I've updated the memo that you have before you tonight. On January 22nd, 2019, council approved a special use permit to authorize a solar energy development at the city's closed landfill. There was also a question about expected construction timeline. I don't have an expected start date for construction. However, according to the state incentives that the project received, the first of the two solar arrays have to be operational by April 2021. So that gives you a sense of at least when we will start pushing renewable energy into our grid and supplying the city building and other households in the community. I also want to clarify that a few weeks ago, I conflated two different time periods, and so I want to straighten that out tonight. The lease is for 25 years. All the other dates are 15 years. So the state incentives are for 15 years. The city is buying electricity as an anchor tenant for 15 years, and the lump sum payment that the city and customers are receiving for the two solar arrays is for the first, is for leasing the first 15 of those 25 years. Any additional occupation upon our property by the solar development, the developer will pay additional rents every single year. So after 15 years, the developer, the incentives the developer and city have received to develop this project will expire, and the developer will have the opportunity to seek new incentives, to seek new buyers of the electricity, and to continue to operate the project. If the developer cannot commercially continue operating the solar arrays, then they have the ability within the lease to cancel the lease, remove the equipment, and that's the end of the project. In reality, they will, they would prefer and will seek other alternatives. They'll seek to find other buyers of electricity, other buyers of the project. But we know that the first 15 years of the operation is commercially viable. So I just wanted to clarify those years. Other than that, we are simply approving an ordinance rather than a resolution according to city code in terms of leasing city property.
Any questions for Scott? Bill?
Yeah, thanks. For, I mentioned this a couple of years ago, I think individually to Scott, but sometimes when they put these panels up, since they aren't going to be puncturing the ground there because of the landfill, they'll use concrete anchors. And we have a company on North Lincoln that does like custom concrete block manufacturing. And I just wanted to mention again that if you check with them, maybe check with them and see if there's a potential relationship there for that company to produce the concrete anchors that the solar panels might need. Then also, I wondered, kind of make sure the memo mentions the power purchase agreement, but there's nothing in the ordinance that talks about the power purchase agreement. So I'm assuming that we don't approve that as part of the lease agreement.
That's correct. So the power purchase agreement is buying electricity, which is budgeted every year. And so that's just a contract that's authorized at the staff level, at the administrative staff level, but at the staff level without a city council action.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? Sharice?
Yes. Scott, my question is basically regarding the lease, because it says residential households, whether property owners or renters can qualify for the lower income, low-income community solar program. So are you saying, too, that after the 15 years, that program will cease to exist?
The program, the incentive that's been provided, which lowers the cost of solar so that low-income households can participate, that incentive is applicable for 15 years. Now, the state may choose to reauthorize that, but as, at present, it's only a 15-year incentive.
Okay. And after that 15 years, then the solar, whatever other incentives are there that they don't necessarily, they don't have to seek out new incentives. They can sell it on the, on the market for whatever price they want to.
Correct. At 15 years, there is still a lease if they choose to, if they're able and willing to find a commercially viable operation. But at 15 years, it could be a market rate operation. They could sell the equipment to the city. The city doesn't have any facilities out there to power, so it's not a good fit for us, probably. Or they can decommission, that is, deconstruct, take away all the equipment, restore the site, and that would be the end of the agreement as well. But yeah, there's no obligation to continue the low-income aspect of the project after 15 years, as that is part of the state incentive.
Okay, but there's a 25-year lease, so they will continue to pay rent even though they may not be doing business on that property?
If they're not able to commercially operate a solar array after 15 years, the lease allows them to end the lease. So they would end the lease, stop making payments, but they would also be responsible for decommissioning, you know, take, disassembling the solar arrays, taking them off-site, recycling them, disposing of them, and restoring the site to the condition in which they found it, if they're not able to continue operating the arrays.
Okay. Thank you. Eric?
Scott, what is the expected lifetime of the panels?
So most, I don't know exactly which solar panels the developer will end up choosing. Most solar panels at the residential scale, similar to what we do with the bulk solar purchase program, Solar Urbana-Champaign, are warranted for 25 years. Inverters are typically, inverters is another piece of equipment, significant piece of equipment that is a part of a solar array. Inverters are warranted for 10 years typically. So, you know, at 15 years, there's still, you know, good value in this equipment. And so the developer will be, you know, naturally incentivized to find other off-takers, whether it's subsidized or incentivized by the state or federal government or not. They certainly will try to avoid having to simply decommission that facility.
Well, that's all I need to know. They will almost certainly outlive me.
Any other questions? Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2020-04-018, an ordinance authorizing the lease to certain real estate, portion of real estate parcel with permanent index number 91-21-10-151-007, located at 901 North Smith Road, with Solarstar Urbana Landfill Central LLC be approved.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill. Further discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. That motion passes.
Can I follow with another motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to move ordinance number 2020-04-019, similar ordinance authorizing the lease to certain real estate, this one with permanent index number 91-21-10-151-006, and 91-21-10-151-007, also located 901 North Smith Road, with Solarstar Urbana Landfill East LLC be approved.
I'll second.
Okay. Who's second?
Bill can have it.
Bill? Okay. All those, any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. Thank you all for your patience on this one. It's actually an improved version second time around, and we don't want to see you back with this one, Scott, okay?
Thanks.
Great job, though. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2020-04-020, which is an ordinance approving a special use permit, 1906 Federal Drive Champagne Social Equity Growers in its Plan Case 2397-SU20. And I think we have Catherine Trotter here to present. Is that correct?
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'm going to share my screen with you. I've got a presentation, and hopefully it'll...
Excuse me, Catherine, can you all hear?
Yeah, I can hear.
Yes.
She can speak a little louder.
Yeah, definitely. I'm going to share my screen with you all. I've got a presentation pulled up. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Very nice. Thank you.
So I'm presenting on Plan Case 2397-SU20 for a special use permit for Champagne Social Equity Growers. Tamela Green, on behalf of Champagne Social Equity Growers, requests a special use permit to allow a craft grower cannabis business at 1906 Federal Drive. Byron Clark and the project team have tuned in remotely to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Champagne Social Equity Growers seeks a special use permit to allow a craft grower cannabis, 1906 Federal Drive, out of West Kenyon Road, and you can see that on the location map on your screen. The special use permit would be for a craft grower, not a cannabis dispensary, and there will be no customers coming to the site. The parcel is roughly 33,000 square feet. The site has no existing land use, but it is surrounded by industrial and agricultural uses. The site is zoned IN1, light industrial and office. The parcels surrounding 1906 Federal Drive are also zoned IN1. A craft grower is permitted in the IN1 light industrial office zoning district. However, craft growers require a special use permit when located within 300 feet of residential zoning. Residentially zoned parcels to the south are less than 300 feet from the site. The parcels are zoned R4, medium-density, multiple family residential, and are currently undeveloped. The parcels are planned for the Union Gardens development and for an affordable housing development. The proposed craft grower is not located within 1,500 feet of another craft grower or cultivation center, and the facility is also not located within 2,500 feet of a school or a park. These are some site photos of the property and the parking lot at 1906 Federal Drive. The applicant plans to use the, utilize the existing building on the property and build on a warehouse addition. The warehouse cultivation area for the craft grower would be approximately 16,000 square feet. The facility would be required to provide eight parking spaces according to the zoning ordinance, and they will have seven employees. The applicant does not anticipate foot traffic, because the craft grower will not be selling to individual clients. There will be no identifiable signage, and the facility entrance and exit will be inconspicuous. And here's the site plan for the development. The applicant is asking for a special use permit to go cannabis plant in an indoor facility. The proposed craft grower would not sell cannabis products to clients at that location. The proposed craft grower would be subject to Illinois State Regulations in the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, which is 410 ILCS 705. Among other things, this act requires craft growers to mitigate exterior odors by installing air scrubbing or air filtration systems. The applicant will also implement a security plan and surveillance system with biometric access per state law. The facility will be monitored 24/7 with guards as well. It will also be fenced and well-lit and have around-the-clock security. Here's some renderings from the applicant as well. To summarize, staff found that the case meets all of the special use permit requirements. The proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at this location. The site is less, slightly less than 300 feet from the nearest residential district, which are both south away from prevailing winds and currently undeveloped. The location is on the northwest side of town, far from other residential districts as well. This will help to minimize any potential odors that may not be fully suppressed by the air filtration, and this will bring no additional traffic to the residential areas. The proposed use is designated, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located or otherwise injurious to the public welfare. or otherwise injurious to the public welfare. The craft growing facility would be surrounded by other IN1-zoned properties and industrial uses. As mentioned before, the facility will be fenced well-lit and include inconspicuous entrances and exits. The facility will also require 24/7 security and install the air filtration. The proposed use would preserve the essential character of the district and is consistent with the IN1 zoning and future land use of the property. The proposed cannabis craft growing facility would be permitted by right in the IN1 zoning district, if not within 300 feet of a residential district. The use fits with the surrounding warehouse and offices uses, office uses in the area. The appearance and function of the building are both consistent with other warehouses in the industrial district. The state of Illinois and City of Urbana regulations in place ensure that the proposed craft grower would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it is located or otherwise injurious to the public welfare. At the March 19th, 2020 meeting, the Plan Commission voted with six a's and zero nays to forward this case to the Urbana City Council with recommendation to approve the request with the following condition. The use conforms to the site plan submitted as shown in ordinance, ordinance attachment A. The city council has the following options. Approve the ordinance. Approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the ordinance. Staff recommends that the city council approve the request for a special use permit for cannabis craft grower at 1906 Federal Drive under the condition that the use generally conforms to the site plan and ordinance attachment A. And I can take any questions you have now.
Any questions for Catherine? Dennis?
Yeah, you indicated that the, the lot is slightly less than 300 feet from the proposed new development, Union Gardens.
Yeah.
Right now, it's an empty lot, but in the future, we're expecting to have housing, rather dense housing in that area. How many feet short are we from the required amount?
So we use a buffer application in GIS, and it is right at 298, give or take feet. So within less than five feet from what we could tell.
So it's negligible.
You could say that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Sharice, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Um, so it's going to be less than 300 feet where there's going to be cannabis grown, other than armed guards. Because of course, that's also, that's an area that's also close to 74, isn't it?
Yeah, and it's not shown on the map, but it's just north of West Kenyon Road by probably a couple hundred feet.
Yeah. And it's also in my ward. My question is, other than armed guards, because now that I know that it's going to be in a warehouse, I'm, I'm a little more positive about it. But the other thing that worries me is, you know, there's just always that, that possibility that somebody, armed guards or not, because, you know, people rob banks. I can see this being issued. And I, and I wonder what else the, the developer would be willing to do, like maybe put up a 10-foot fence around the perimeter or something that actually keeps, even though it's a little bit of, it's only, it's less than 300 feet. It's 300 feet from residential areas, but that it, it, there'd be other, other devices to keep people away from that or to not tempt the devil, so to speak, to enter into that space.
Is it possible to have the applicants speak to those concerns? Are they on the line?
They are on the line, and they should be able to answer those questions as well.
Yeah. So first, thank you, council, for allowing us to attend electronically this evening. My name is Byron Clark. I'm representing the Champagne Social Equity Growers. To answer our woman's, Hersi's question, in addition to the armed guards, we have contracted with Effie Moran Security to provide state-of-the-art electronic surveillance, and we are going to add fencing as another security measure on this project.
Okay. And do you, Hersi, or, you know, I know you're not a prognosticator, but do you, do you understand why, why I think that it's very important to kind of try to keep this as under wraps as possible if, if in fact this is passed?
Absolutely. The goal of the group is to be great community partners. And on that note, I do appreciate all of the coordination with the City of Urbana staff, particularly Cat Trotter, who's been very helpful, and Kevin Garcia as well. But yes, we do see the need to make sure that we leave as minimal a visual footprint as possible and to have great security in that area.
Okay. Mary Allison and Jared.
So Dennis had asked my main question, but I, I just want to kind of reiterate. I think that at the Plan Commission, the two people that spoke who were concerned, they were worried about traffic. But because this is not a place that will be actually selling any cannabis, this is just where it will be growing. You're going to have, what, at maximum? If you have an entire shift change, you're going to have 14 people in and out of there in five or 10 minutes. So you're not really going to have much traffic. I'm, I'm sure that not everybody's going to leave at the same time. I just want confirmation on the amount of traffic that you expect at the facility.
Well, again, it's hard to talk about the actual traffic, but this, this shift change, I'm sorry, may not be in a traditional form where we have all of the employees going out and all going in. What we envision is that certain employees will have to work regular business hours, and then we'll have minimal employees after that and during night hours, including the armed guard.
And then I assume, since you're not selling anything, you're not keeping any money on the premise.
It is our plan to, to have as little cash and money and other valuable assets on the property as possible, except for the product itself, which will be guarded, and we will have a vault on-site for that.
All right, thank you.
Jared, and then we'll go to Eric, and then Bill.
Bill was actually after me, or before me, and he raised his hand, I saw.
You did, okay. All right, we'll go to Bill, then Jared, then Eric.
That's Bill Colbrook, right?
Bill Colbrook, yes.
Oh, okay. So I guess this is a question for the developer. And isn't it correct that the state of Illinois, through at least the Illinois State Police, has a very exhaustive compliance program? Won't there be compliance officers coming around to the building to make sure that your security protocols are in place according to the very long list that has been developed?
That is correct, and extensive is an understatement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jared.
I didn't see a lot in the memo about the business itself, Champagne Social Equity Growers, so I'd like to learn more about them. I don't know, Byron, if you can speak to who owns the business, if it's local, if this is their first business, other information like that.
Yep. So the Champagne Social Equity Growers is comprised of local applicants, including business owners, community leaders, and other investors. Also, we have investors from, who will be the operators that reside currently in other states. Marion Main is a, is owned by Hope Wiseman, one of the, the youngest black dispensary owner in the United States. We've also partnered with a grower based in the DC area for operational aspects, who will be handling the operational aspects of the grow operation. It's a 100% African-American-owned company. And, and, yeah, that, that is an outline of the company.
That answered your question, Jared.
So, so you have operators and owners outside of the local group that you're partnering with local groups?
Yeah, the, the majority share of the group is comprised of local applicants, and we do have other partners who will lend their expertise to the operation.
And do you plan to employ folks from the community, or will people be coming in from elsewhere to work here?
It is definitely the group's intent to employ from the community and ideally from what the state has defined as the disproportionately impacted area or the DIA, where the facility is based.
Okay, thank you.
How many employees will you have?
It will vary. Right now, we anticipate six or seven employees to start.
Okay. Sharice and then Eric.
Yes, my question is, do you, will you be harvesting and your crop as well as, how will you transport it? When we're talking about traffic, is this something that Mary Allison maybe think about? Oh, yeah, how are you going to get it out of there? Or is it going to be semi-trucks or, you know, pickup trucks? Or how do you plan on, how would that impact the area?
Well, I doubt that we'll need a semi-truck over. That would be a great problem to have. But the state of Illinois does require that transporting outside of a 15-mile radius be, you have licensed special use transporters that are licensed by the state of Illinois.
Okay. So do you anticipate having, having to transport after everything gets up and going, having to transport once, twice, three times a week? Or, and will you be har, you'll be harvesting the crop there? You'll not be moving it someplace else to be harvested or whatever?
Yeah, it will be grown and harvested and cured at the facility. And yes, we, the regular, the regularity of the transport schedule will, will be based on demand, of course.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sharice? Eric, go ahead.
So as I sometimes do, I was Googling a little bit, and what I Googled was thefts from marijuana growers. And it makes very colorful reading if you're into the crime caper style of literature, but it doesn't sound as though it's very, very likely to happen to any particular growers. So I think it's not going to be, we're, we're probably going to be lucky in that respect.
Yeah, I certainly hope so.
Any other questions? Could I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
You want to make it, Mary Alice?
I'll make the motion. I move that we approve ordinance number 2020-04-020, an ordinance approving a special use permit for 1906 Federal Drive Champagne Social Equity Growers Plan Case 2397 SU20.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Further discussion? Jared?
I just wanted to say that I was extremely excited to hear and read this. Our first growing operation in town. Seems like it's in a, in a good place and nonetheless a minority-owned company, hiring locally. This is a really cool development, I hope we see more of it.
Any other discussion? I would just like to thank Mr. Clark and Ms. Green for investing in your community and in Urbana. And I'll tell you, Ward 3, there's a lot happening in Ward 3 these days, so.
Too much.
All right, I guess we're ready for a vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes?
Yes. I heard a yes, right, Bill? He's nodding his head yes.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Colbrook?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes, you're breaking up, kind of.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes, thank you.
Can I say something real quick, Diane?
Yes, you may.
Regarding this particular ordinance, or I, I was initially going to vote no. But I have to say, the, the representative convinced me that this would be a safe business. So I, I really want to thank him for answering the questions as thoroughly as he did. So that helped me, that helped sway me a bit.
Appreciate it. Thanks again, and thanks, Cap, for all your work on this project as well.
Yes.
All right, we have one last item on the agenda. It's ordinance 2020-04-021, which is ratification of emergency order 2002, and it's related to ambulance services staffing and response times. This was an emergency order issued on March 31st, which is a couple of weeks ago now. And it modifies response times as well as staffing requirements on our private ambulance companies serving in the city of Urbana. Just as a reminder, you may know, or you may remember, we have two private ambulances, services in, operating in the city. They alternate months being stationed at the main fire station. So it's Carl, Aral Ambulance and OSF Pro Ambulance. Our code requires that these companies staff the ambulances with one EMT, emergency medical technician, and then one provider with advanced training or two advanced providers. And then they're also required to respond to calls either within eight minutes or 12 minutes, depending on the nature of the calls. And the calls are classified by MedCAD depending on the, what they're about. Several weeks ago, as the COVID crisis grew, we were asked to buy the ambulance companies and the fire department, actually, to consider modifying the requirement for response times. And this was in anticipation of having extra or increased demand on calls or high numbers of illnesses among the ambulance staff or the paramedics, for example. So it would give the companies a little more flexibility in response time without incurring a fine. Under the code now, if they don't meet these response times within 90% of the time, then they're, then they're subject to a fine. And that actually has happened in the past. So it's not like this is a new thing. But they are still going to be reporting what their response times are. It's just that this emergency order will waive the penalties, or this emergency order will waive the penalties during the period that our emergency declaration is in place. And there was a, almost identical order to this was issued in Champagne, probably a week before ours.
Yes, I was getting ready to raise my hand. Is this so that we can increase the amount of time that it takes them to respond? This is...
Well, they're going to try, you know, they're going to try to adhere to this, to the response times that they always have. But in the event that they are overwhelmed with calls or they're experiencing shortages or whatever, this would give them a little more flexibility in staffing and response time. But at this point, I don't think it's, it's an issue. You know, we have eight patients, eight or nine patients currently hospitalized with COVID right now. Most people are at home and the house, you know, we're not overwhelming... Most people are at home and the, you know, we're not overwhelming the healthcare facilities at this point, so I think pretty much they're operating as normal at this point. But like I said, a few weeks ago, people really didn't know what to expect, and so this was one of the early, certainly one of the early orders put into effect in Champagne, and it was the one that they also requested of us. Any other questions? Mary Alice?
So I was looking at the after the whereas in section one, and I thought that there were three different ways that an ordinance can be nullified. So if I remember correctly, when we passed the emergency ordinance, it was lifted if the governor no longer has the ordinance in effect, the special ordinance that he has right now, I don't remember which one it is.
Are you talking about our emergency order?
Yes, our emergency order, I thought that our emergency order was nullified if either, if something, if either the governor lifts the emergency order or you do, and I can't remember the order of operations.
It would be section three, it remain, our temporary ordinance remains in effect until the governor of the state of Illinois lifts or terminates his disaster declaration, or the mayor lifts or terminates the declaration of emergency, whichever is later.
Whichever is later, so how does that apply for this section one?
So if?
So that says to me that our emergency order is still in effect if, even if you lift it, until the governor lifts his.
But we can override it.
But city council can override the whole thing.
Right.
Right.
So I'm just wondering if we need to update section one.
Of this ordinance?
Yes, of the current ordinance, based on the emergency ordinance order of operations.
Is Jim Simon on?
Yeah, he should be here, at least he was. He's on, but it doesn't look like he has the ability to talk.
He's not connected, okay.
Is this something you want to table? I mean, it's, I don't know if we can.
Ratifies and confirms the emergency order. It remains in effect until we lift the emergency order or the city council repeals the emergency order.
Whichever occurs first.
Whichever, for this one, yes, but for the emergency order that we have, it's whichever occurs last.
And I'm not sure, I understand, what is the question exactly?
I just want it to be in parallel with our existing emergency order and how things are lifted in this one.
Okay, rather than try to write this on the fly, we could, you could carry this over till the next meeting.
That's fine with me, if other people are okay with that, I mean, right now it's in effect.
Correct, it's in effect.
I would, I would say, Mary Alice, that the language defers to our emergency order, I don't know that in, you know, a declaration made or an ordinance put under our emergency order, that we need to reiterate something that is already written in our emergency order. I don't think it's necessary to repeat it. I mean, the, what the governor does in repealing our emergency order will, you know, do what it does regardless of whatever the section is. If the larger one gets repealed, then it doesn't matter what this one says, because it depends on that one being in place in the first place.
So?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can, Jim.
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right, apparently it's finally unmuted. The way this would work is if the governor releases or repeals his emergency executive order, or if Diane repeals hers, and I don't have the language of the section that Diane quoted, but this would automatically, the fire one, or the ambulance one, would automatically likewise be repealed. Or Diane can take action beforehand on the ambulance ordinance to repeal it.
Can we, can we just change section one so that it just references, that it will use the same language as emergency order 2002 in terms of when it is in effect and when it ends? And then we don't have to worry about, that would make it consistent across the board.
Yeah, what I would suggest for that, if you want to go that route, because that's a policy decision, not a legal decision, would be to make an amendment. Somebody proposed, you, Mary Alice, proposed the amendment to change section one, and then I will edit it based on your proposal and then send it to Diane, and she and Charlie can sign it as amended. And I'm assuming the amendment would pass the council tonight, that way you don't have to come back and deal with this again.
So would you suggest language for the amendment?
You're talking to Jim?
Yeah, the only problem, you know, I would suggest language, but I don't have, right now I don't have the actual emergency ordinance.
Okay, so you could, the amendment could be stated to direct staff to change the section one to be consistent with section three of our emergency declaration.
Yes, that would be, that would be fine.
That, that works for me.
Okay.
The amendment.
So, I mean, sorry.
Charlie's raising his hand.
Charlie?
Well, I was going to say is you don't have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
So Mary Alice can make one motion that makes the change and approves the ordinance, the rest of the ordinance.
Okay, well, let's get a motion on the floor.
I can make that motion.
Okay.
So I'll move ordinance number 2020-04021, ratification of emergency order 2002, ambulance services, staffing and response times issued on March 31st, 2020.
There a second?
Well, I'm not done. That be, be approved with one clarification of section one.
Which is?
Which is to make the phrasing in section one consistent with the emergency order 2002, did you say number three?
Section three.
Section three.
So the phrasing consistent with section three.
Yes.
Is there a second?
My second.
Seconded by Sharice, okay, further discussion.
So are we going to, to discuss the language of the amendment now, or is that something that will be done by staff?
I think it's something that can be done by staff if you feel that they have appropriate direction.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no problem with that, I'll just, to the extent it fits contextually, I'll just take the language of section three and drop it in with some edit to make it fit contextually.
Does that work for?
Yep, that works.
Yeah.
And what we can do is send around a revised copy of emergency order, of this ordinance, actually, when it's done. Any further discussion?
We got a vote.
Why no?
Oh, okay.
I'll just say that I'm, it's good to know that we at this time are not stressed to have ambulance service that is adequate for the needs of our community.
Well, and, you know, it's attributable to great leadership on a lot of levels and amazing compliance throughout the community with the stay-at-home order and the social, physical distancing, where our community has responded just amazingly well. And, and it's showing, so, so it's a collective effort that has made, gotten us so far to where we are. It's not over by any means, but so far, it's gotten us this, you know, we're okay.
I agree.
Eric, was your, was your hand up?
My hand is up, and I just want to comment, I'll support this. But it's a little bit ironic, because the reason that our medical facilities are not stressed is because of the stay-at-home order. And they will be, unless we, you know, put some other regimen, testing regimen in place, they will become stressed after we, after we relax the order. So there's a funny 180-degree mismatch, temporal mismatch, nevertheless, I will support.
Well, you know, we will, as we have done the past month, we will, we will deal with it when it happens, or try to anticipate it a little before it does, but you're right, yeah. I mean, there's, there's a lot of mismatch still in this whole, in this whole situation. Eric, or Jared?
Diane, do you have any general updates from the task force about where things stand? I know, I thought I had heard that we had no new cases yesterday, but I'm looking at the CUPHD website and it looks like there was one confirmed case yesterday and one confirmed case the day before. Are they talking, what are they saying right now?
The, there were a total of, I believe, 87 cases and eight, I believe, are hospitalized, 40, some have recovered and 40 are recovering. At this point, you know, we have planned, hospitals have planned for surge capacity, they've made arrangements with the University of Illinois. The biggest challenge right now locally is still getting some PPE, but also the testing. The biggest challenge, I think, right now is getting hands-on adequate testing. And, and that's going to be the key to transitioning to our new normal, whatever that is going to be. So, so that's, that's one of the challenges at this point. But as far as the structure we have in place, where, you know, we have a really good framework in place for planning and logistics and finance and that sort of thing throughout, and we're working with our countywide partners on that. And we've worked out a plan for funding in terms of purchasing supplies and that sort of thing. So, so the framework, the structure's in place, and we're keeping the numbers down, which is really good. And people are starting to think about and start to plan for, you know, the next phase, but it's going to hinge on testing.
Are the main reasons behind a shortage of testing just supplies?
As I understand it, yeah, and, and, I mean, you know, I believe it's, and I shouldn't speak on behalf of the public health aspect of this, but, but, you know, there's the antibody test, and then there's the positive, the test for whether you're positive or negative, and it's, it's, it's the availability.
Because?
Diane?
Yes.
It's Jim.
Yes.
Currently, there are 37 active cases, 48 recovered cases, nine hospitalized, and unfortunately, two deaths. One of the problems with the testing, not the antibody testing, but the testing, according to recent publications by experts in, you know, virus testing and all, is that the reagents needed to process the tests once blood is drawn or samples are taken, there was not the ramp up for those reagents. So while some, you know, test kits are a problem, also the ability of laboratories to process those are a problem, because they don't have the reagents, and they expect, you know, anywhere from four to six months to really ramp up the reagents, because they're having difficulties obtaining the chemicals needed to manufacture the reagents.
I just was asking, because my wife usually does a shift or two a week in the testing shed for Carl, and when she was there over the weekend on her shift, they had no one come through during her eight-hour shifts. And I know it's partly because of the policies that we don't have enough tests, we're prioritizing only to folks who are seriously at risk or seriously sick, which is going to, I would assume, cause a problem with lifting anything, because we still don't know who's got it, who doesn't, tracking and all those things, so I didn't know if they were talking about those things yet or not.
Yeah, they are.
Thanks.
Thanks. Well, Bill?
Let's see, yeah, I'm unmuted. I know that there's been discussion, that some West Coast states are getting together and starting to talk about what a reopening would look like and how it would be gradual and everything. And I know there are certain things that should probably get back to as normal as possible, or earlier as possible, like elective surgeries and other procedures that people need to have for cancer checks and things like that. Has there been a discussion at the state level that you've heard of as what type of model our state will follow as far as reopening plan?
I haven't heard anything at this point, I sit in on, the governor does calls twice a week, conference calls, and I'm hoping that, that that's one of the topics that he'll be starting to talk about, you know, going forward, considering other states on either coast are, are doing that.
Okay, thank you.
But it's, you know, it's the kind of thing that you can't be an island when you do it, you have to, we, one county can't do it, you know, it has to be a, it has to be a coordinated effort. Okay. Anything else?
You need to vote on the motion.
Pardon?
You need to vote on the motion.
Oh, we've lost, got lost in this discussion. All those, let's see, does this, will the clerk please call the roll? Thank you, Charlie, for reminding us.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Ursi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes, and as I said, we'll send around the revised, a copy of the revised ordinance to you all, so. Right, with no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.